Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, May 8, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. First, I'll start off by saying a prayer by Pastor John C.
Yes, sir. Just in right.
How are you doing?
Father, we do give you praise, we do give you thanks, Lord, for the life that we have, for the voice that you've given us, for the opportunity that we got to come here as fellow citizens, share and talk and work out an agreement one amongst another. We ask you, Lord, to give us wisdom and discernment. We ask those, Father, that will be hearing, making decisions, or will make it to your honor and glory. We thank you, Father, for our country, we thank you for our freedoms. We ask everything that will be said and done will please you. Father, we claim the verb said, "If any man lacks wisdom, loathen the mask of God." So we ask you, Lord, for all things, if you give us wisdom, give us discernment, give us grace and peace, Lord, to come to a footing together. For we love you, we say this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to ask everybody, may I say anything for the pledge? My pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with a redemptive straw.
I approve of this for April 20, 2023. Is there any objections? Here are none, they are approved for May 4, 2023. Are there any objections?
Not objections, just a couple of corrections.
Okay.
The first page with the minimum minutes, first line amended, this needs to be corrected. And then item 3C, the back of page three. We need to insert a motion by Mr. Stalberg to approve the reinstatement. Jane, so you're on the minutes from May 4?
Yes, yes.
All right, are there any other objections? All right, there's a couple of minor changes, they are approved and submitted. Approval of accounts payable from May 11, 2023, amount of $230,788.38, objection is approved. Or accounts payable from May 18, 2023, amount of $277,817.18, objection is approved. Or approval of manual checks from May 12, 2023, amount of $56,724.40, objection is approved. Or accounts payable from May 19, 2023, amount of $246,729.70, objection is approved. Approval payroll, May 12, 2023, amount of $289,609.10, objection is approved. Are there any announcements? Okay, all right, we're going to move on to public comment. There was a sign up sheet in the back, you get a chance, you could sign up before the meeting. You'll have three minutes. You come up, state your name and your address. Once you hear the buzzer, you're done. Start off by Mark. Mark, can you appear? Yeah, there you go.
You should know by now. Let me tell you a story, a parable, if you will, like in which you all seem to find some truth. There was once this fake preacher that wanted to lead attendees of a governor function in prayer. This is totally contradicting what Jesus said about giving prayers private and in a closet. In fact, his prayer was sectarian and denominational, so it was in violation of your own prayer policy. And also in violation of a number of specific rulings recently made by the Supreme Court of the United States. With a prize to these facts, the person in question went on a cursing rant going on and on about how I was going to go to heaven and worse. All indications of such lousy examples of how supposedly righteous Christians such as yourselves should behave. Then, in an attempt to de-escalate the situation, I tried to leave by exiting the main entry door to the building. But he blocked me to prevent this. I guess he thought he wasn't done. He wouldn't even let me close the door as he was outside. It would have quieted the disturbance he was causing. So here's where you all jump to conclusions, believing what you wanted as long as it was made up, that there was, as reported by the sheriff, who wasn't even at the door, this infamous chest bump. It's a good thing you all didn't press charges. That's why I did harassment and blocking my right of passage. And something you all should know is that if prayers would work, we wouldn't need none of you all commissioners.
Next is, last name Stone? Natalie, okay, sorry, it's your handwriting, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Commissioners, my name is Natalie Stagg, and I represent the North Central Building Trades, which represents the men and women of the construction industries that live here in your area. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of the Wild Hill Solar Project. They put a year presentation on later this evening. They've made a commitment to use the West Virginia local workers to construct their project. That will ensure that those workers are highly skilled, drug-free, and make a livable wage with health insurance and benefits to support their families, and we ask that you support the project. Thank you.
Next is Bridget Coe.
Good evening, my name is Bridget.
You can sit if you like.
I will, thank you. I'm one of your circuit court judges, and right now it's the 23rd Judicial Circuit. So Jefferson is part of Jefferson, Berkeley, and Morgan County. And in our legislation in January, they've made Jefferson County its own circuit, starting in January of 2025. And I'm here to say hello because I'm going to be moving to Jefferson County. I'm closing on a house on June 9. And I will be changing dockets with Judge McLaughlin, so you'll be seeing me a lot more. And then in May of 2024, all the circuit judges will be on the ballot. And the circuit for Jefferson County will get two judges, and I'll be running for one of those seats. So I came to introduce myself and just let you know I'm going to be around a lot more often. So if you have any questions or anything that you would like to say to me, I'd be happy to do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Richard Ziegler.
Good evening, my name is Richard Ziegler, I reside on Brooklyn North, Fourth Road, Charleston, West Virginia. I'm here to express my support for Wild Hill Solar. I am here this evening as a member of the community of Jefferson County, who have the opportunity to do great things for Jefferson County here in this chamber. Wild Hill Solar is asking to provide economic boon to the county. In return, they would like to offer a large sum upfront payment using the common practice of pilot agreements. The county is to build two new, two more schools in the very near future, as well as other improvements. With all the housing currently being built, this lump sum of money would, could help finance these projects. The only reason I bring this up is because rarely do any large-scale jobs come in at or below budget. Solar facilities are also a boon, and they occupy large tracts of land for about 30 years. 30 years from now, when most of the available land has already been developed, these tracts of land will be either returning to farming, if economically feasible to do so at that time, or can be used for other necessary purposes such as schools, hospitals, business centers, or even more housing, if that's the best use of the land. Farmers are the best stewards of the land because, because if it is economically to do so, preserves for some form of agriculture. But if there are no farmers, the land cannot be developed under farmland protection, land then becomes a money pit to be maintained as a park. This is important because otherwise improved or developed land would have to be purchased in the future, cleared for where the future needs might be. Currently, with a lot of solar panels now being retired, there is a number of companies, there are a number of companies starting up to recycle. Recently, Mike Rowe of Dirty Jobs TV thing did an article for just such a startup facility, which plans to net $2 million for the end of their next fiscal year. There is incentive to recycle, and it only improves as technology improves. Also, solar has the attributes that I expressed in the past, good for the environment because of soil stabilization with continual vegetation, which will also capture atmospheric carbon. Wildlife will have refuge, even though some security barriers are established. They will restrict deer, not stop them, and people that will vandalize property. Deer can get over six-foot fence, so there's no need for adjustments for their concerns such as pass-throughs. No new students will be enrolled because solar panels don't generate shelter. Pollution factors that are routinely brought up at meetings occur only during manufacturing, not installation or usage. No new emergency services will be needed, and no new water or sanitary infrastructure will be required. What we have is an opportunity, what we have to offer is a way to use solar energy to generate money for the county and tax revenues further down the road, preserve the land for the needs and desires of next generation in 30 years, and to improve the quality of life in the community.
Next, we have Mr. Doug Rockwell.
My name is Doug Rockwell, I live in Irishtown, area. And I'm a justice, PO Box 727, Charleston. Want to speak to item eight of your agenda? Your pilot agreement with Wild Hill was a bad idea for the county and its taxpayers, two reasons. First, it reduces tax revenue to the county, particularly the schools, for the singular purpose of increasing the value of investments to equity participants. In other words, a portion of the money for property taxes would indirectly be paid to wealthy investors and Wall Street investment firms who own shares in the LLC. At the bottom of page nine of Wild Hill presentation in your packet is the following quote: "If operational costs are too high, they can sour investment value," end quote. It further implies the annual tax liability, meaning the BNO and property taxes, would not be competitive, thus causing the sour investment value. Therefore, the property tax would have to be reduced, or you do this argument, so value to wealthy investors may be increased. To take it a step further, in attachment A to the pilot agreement, which I've left copies in front of you, entitled Payment Under Agreement, you are told the amount to be paid in lieu of property taxes is to be made over 39 years. Are we now allowing Wild Hill to dictate the amount it will pay to the county in lieu of taxes? That's what they're suggesting to you. Although the attachment says 39 years, in section 3.02A2, Wild Hill only promises to make payments for 30 years. Section 4.02A states the pilot agreement will remain in effect for 30 years, not 39. The second objection, Wild Hill is leasing land from three families, one of whom just spoke, which will be assigned to the county, who as tenants will be responsible for rent payments and other obligations under the lease. Wild Hill will construct solar panels, transformer, batteries, et cetera, on said land, and when completed, transfer the facility to the county, who in return will lease the whole back to Wild Hill. A copy of that lease is not available for review. As owner of the, owners of the solar panel, excuse me, as owner of the solar facility, the county will be liable in law for any toxic leakage, decommissioning, site clearing, and restoration. The promise of indemnification by Wild Hill is just that, a promise. The taxpayers will be stuck with the bill because Wild Hill is just a shell of a company with no assets.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell, your time is up.
Under the agreement, Wild Hill is not required to take.
I'm trying to finish my time, Mr. Rockwell, to finish his presentation. I'm signed up for.
That's all right, we don't do it like that. Mr. Rockwell is three men, it's the same issue, so.
Remember, you have approved.
Mr. Rockwell.
Forest and Solar on Route 9, they did not signal three.
Next is, did he stick?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to speak as a taxpaying citizen and a native of Jefferson County. And as such, I'd like to remind the public and voters what we voted for. Commissioner Tab, you ran on being a common sense conservative. Commissioner Kraus, you ran on faith and family. Commissioner Stalfer, you ran on being fiscally responsible. Commissioner Jackson, you ran on being fiscally responsible and transparency. Commissioner App, you ran on Commissioner Stalfer's coattails, and in August, voting to not make the EMS a county department, to which you rescinded that vote after being elected to office by flip-flopping your vote in January of just this year. So why, I'm sorry. So thank you, Commissioner Jackson and Commissioner Kraus, for keeping your promises. So why am I reminding the public of this? Because these five are your electeds that represent you and what you voted for. Three of the five have not kept their promises to you. The citizen first, then the voter. With that said, as a voter, I pay my taxes and get threatened with public humiliation by not having, by having my name published in the local paper, newspaper, if I don't pay my taxes. Therefore, everyone should pay their taxes. I do not support a pilot program within Jefferson County. I like the natural lay of the land and the beauty West Virginia has to offer, not solar panels. And as a taxpaying citizen, in my opinion, legal counsel for this commission should not be creating ordinance changes or amendments to ordinances without a full vote from the five commissioners. Since the EMS will become a county department by July 1, my taxes, not an ambulance fee, should be, it should be sufficient for this, to run this department. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Mee. Okay, we want to, Bill Smith.
He's all right, it is, it's fine. I see with your rules that you're not supposed to respond, I mean, really, I need some kind of response. I'm having trouble dealing with Frontier Communications as a telecommunications internet provider, and I use, supposedly have some jurisdiction or, or control over them. I need to speak to somebody that I can get in contact with at Frontier, or you, or something, to see about getting the scratch for fiber service they're supposed to be working on. So can I get with your clerk or something and get information?
Mr. Smith, I'll be happy to help you if you want to send me an email tomorrow.
I'm sorry, what?
I'll be happy to help you if you'd like to send me an email tomorrow.
All right, you have my name, that's myname@gmail.com.
Can, can you send me an email?
I can't, I don't have my glasses on, I can't see your name.
I'll give you my card, and you can take it and email me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Dave Dab. David Jones.
David Tab, Jefferson County, President of the Law Line, lifelong taxpayer, 107 Campbell Lane, Harper's Ferry, West Virginia. Yeah, I got tired of the GPS stuff and bought my own road and put it up. That's how you do business around this town, isn't it? You just take it upon yourself and don't ask any questions. Presentation seven, JCSA reimbursement for $23,000 in medical expenses. Well, it's actually $33,000. Actually, the packet was pretty good on this one. They collected $10,400 for the April billing, which proves that you are charging for the service. The only problem is, you didn't charge enough. So you got a, a default of $23,000. So when are you guys going to start making money? Now, on the reimbursement for labor, you only asked for $3,700. That's good, about $20,000 less. But they didn't put in there how much money they made off of the service. Presentation eight, solar panel. I was under the impression there's no more pilot programs within Jefferson County due to Rockwell. Y'all got any answers to that? It's a shame, because we're looking at $82 million over a 30-year period that the county's not going to get, and there's a whole lot more questions. I am for business, but it has to be done right. I've had to pay all my taxes, so should everybody else. Presentation nine, Mr. Cochran. Terms B, C, D, and E are not courtroom issues, and there's no paperwork. You cannot act or take any actions on it. On presentation 10, this is supposed to be EMS transition, make a book or whatever, for a department manager. Y'all didn't pair anything, but this is all bullet print with no information. Presentation 12, there is no presentation, there's no request for presentation, and the commission cannot act. Back to public comment, it appears that Mr. Casto, Esquire, has a real problem with me filing an official document to a West Virginia commission. In part, he states, Mr. Tab, there's a long and storied history of filing administrative complaints against government officials. Mr. Tab tactics seems to be harass and bully public officials. I'll wear that as a badge of honor, and I've been doing it for a long time. We also have a judge in our presence, so when this changeover and we go to another circuit court, I think that my sanctions that were put on by this county commission will end. And I'll practice again. Y'all have a nice day.
Next, we have Bob H.
My name is Bob H., and I live on Wood Cliff Road. When I pay taxes in this county, the full amount of taxes that I'm assessed, I submit a memo about 1:30 this afternoon. If anybody in the commission have not had a chance to read that. Everybody see, everybody see that yet?
I haven't seen it yet.
No? I would ask, I have a copy here, and I would ask that it be made part of the record and respectfully request that you take the opportunity to read it. What I would like to address shortly, you're going to hear a slick presentation by maybe a lawyer and a bunch of people who are used to doing this kind of thing. And I think you need to look at this agreement, proposed agreement, to really determine in your own mind the good faith of these people. And I suggest to you that they're acting in bad faith, and that this agreement is a bad deal for Jefferson County and for your constituents. Paragraph number two states that there's a substantial economic benefit to Jefferson County and the citels and quality employment. That's not true. You've heard presentations by these types of people before, and there's anywhere from two to four people, once the, once the project is operational, to maintain it, and that's all, and that's insignificant. And you go down here and look at the project going on below the Catholic Church down there, and you look at the tags on all those vehicles, they're all out-of-state workers. They're all out-of-state vehicles, they're from Ohio, you know, Michigan, nobody from West Virginia. So that's, that's a fiction. One thing you have to keep in mind is that when they, if, if this agreement were going to affect, and they transfer the property and the project to the county, it's solely based on, based on paragraph six, cancellation option in favor of the project company, and I'm quoting, a repurchase option in favor of the project company. That means that once they transfer to the county, the county stuck with it unless they, at their option, decide that they want to take it back. So that's where we get into the problem of maintenance, upkeep, decommissioning, getting rid of these solar panels that others have already admitted before you have cadmium telluride and other highly carcinogenic materials in them. And, thank you, Mr. James. The only other thing I would say is that the payment schedule is a backloaded payment schedule, you know, 39 years on a 30-year project, and the $500,000 payments are at the end. And, you know, you need to think about, if you do something like this, how are you going to enforce? How are you going to enforce? And if you can't enforce it, the taxpayers and the county, everybody gets the short end of the stick. So I'm asking you to vote no. Thank you.
Mark, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Mark Marand, and I live on Shade Tree Lane in Shenandoah Junction. Shade Tree Lane may sound familiar to you because it's one of the proposed locations for a 660-acre solar farm by Anell. My home sits less than 100 feet from this proposed location. Currently, this location is a working farm, and it has been for several years. I have a few questions, which I know you won't answer, but I would like you to take the time and research, because these questions you should be thinking about as a commissioner. First one I have is, how are these solar farms beneficial to residents of Jefferson County? I would like to point out, these projects offer very few permanent jobs, but will these jobs be offered to local workers? How will the residents who live within a half-mile to one-mile of the solar farm be compensated for the decreased property values? On average located, average home located within half a mile to a mile sustain a 1.5% decrease in property value? Will the state receive any federal tax credit for allowing the solar, solar farms replacing our working farmlands in Jefferson County? Next one is, who will receive the harvested energy from the proposed solar companies? I've done a little research on large-scale solar farm profits. On average, these solar farms ROI, return of investment, are an average of 10 to 15%. One acre of solar farm panels can earn 25, or I'm sorry, $21,250 to $42,500 per year. With that being said, Anell is projected to make $14,190,000 to $28,500,000 a year. Now, please tell me why these companies would need a pilot program? Do these companies not already receive a federal tax break for supplying green energy? As a commissioner, you should make these simple, this should make things simple in your voting. Sit down and make a list of pros and cons. If the cons outweigh the pros, then your vote should be no. Above all, you should be praying for wisdom about all of your choices, because one day, we will have to answer to it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, you're still muted right now.
Yes, hi. I just will keep this very brief. I want to say that I oppose this pilot agreement in addition to all of the other pilot agreements that are currently existing in Jefferson County, the Rockwell, the Tima, American AP, American Public University. I imagine the Hilltop House will be asking for one as well. I think they do not make financial sense for the county, and I think we shortchange our, ourselves as a county and county government when we approve pilot agreements. There are near 7,000 acres of Jefferson County land in the PJMQ for solar, and I think it would be wise, before approving any more pilot agreements, to study the long-term benefits or losses when the county takes on each of these pilot agreements. Thank you. That's all.
Got one more. Jane, can you hear us? Ms. Jane Ziegler? Ms. Jane?
I'm there.
She has her hand raised, and she's unmuted. She can't hear. She can't hear us. Ms. Jane?
If she sends you a memo or something, we can come back. All right. That's all. Currently we have a public comment. We have one that for some reason we've had some technical difficulties. So now, unmute, we'll come back to them. They've notified us to the comment section on the webinar. All right, we're going to move on to agenda number one, Tom Hanson, Sheriff. Not you.
Well, Lieutenant.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners and residents of Jefferson County. In 2022, you approved the hiring of Robin Morland, position of animal control kennel tech and administrative assistant. She has excelled at this position and although, again, it's for an open animal spot, this seems to be a good match to her now. This Morland has shown the spark meter and skill possessing the ability to offer more to the community and welfare of the animals. So the Sheriff's Department would like to promote her to a full-time animal control officer as an ADR position with a start date of March 1st, 2023 and an increase in salary to $38,000.
Just keeping it short. I mean.
$38,623.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, sir. With this promotion, we now have a vacancy in the position of animal control kennel tech. During our animal control officer interview process, we had an applicant who was about to graduate from high school and it made very clear that animal welfare and the job of an animal control officer was a single interest of his. Now, this was a rare instance, but also a positive sign for a younger person to have this drive and focus. We didn't feel he was ready to be an animal control officer, but the position of kennel tech and administrative assistant will allow him to gain valuable experience and both grow and develop as Robin did in that position. We would like to then hire Zachary Holler for an ADR position beginning May 22nd, 2023 with a salary of $32,347.
I'm going to approve the hire of Zachary Holler for an amount of $32,347, start date May 2nd. Excuse me, May 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
The George County Sheriff's Department is requesting approval to hire Brent Morland as a probationary deputy. He has passed all the preliminary requirements. He starts an 80-hour non-certified deputy beginning the week of June 11th, 2023 and a starting salary of $39,950.
I'm going to approve the hire of Brent Morland for probationary deputy beginning June 12th. Starting salary is $45,950.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President, I think this is more just a notification than anything. The civil service testing was completed and the numbers calculated. Sergeant Ronald Fletcher was the top of the list for promotion to lieutenant. He was sworn into that position on May 5th, 2023 and salary adjusted accordingly. I think we just have to make him aware of that. Thank you. Last one, in preparation for the next auction of county property, it was discovered that the code states the county commission president is the person who's in charge of these sales. Slightly ironic. West Virginia Code 7-3-3A, the property shall be sold at onsite public auction or by utilizing an internet-based public auction service and the sale shall be conducted by the president of the county commission. Now, the sheriff's department has in the past held and conducted these sales and we are more than happy to continue in that role. We're just requesting a decision if you would like to, for us to keep that role and take care of them or.
Questions? Would you go to public auction? I know Debbie said something about sealed bids or some of that.
That would be a question for you, for her answer at that point. Generally, in the past, we publish them, given public apple opportunity, we host the auction, people come in.
I don't have, I don't know if my opinion has, or if my problem continues. We have been, do we need a motion to state that?
I think you would just need to designate your representative.
Okay. And just enough sign of option here. So I could maybe do this for you, but I'll still let you do it. I'm, I'm going to approve to allow the sheriff to continue to auction, how I put that, the excess property and.
It's public auction and we also have a conservatorship property currently in our possession, which we would like to include in that sale. And the reason we kind of would like to kind of maintain it is it's all there so we don't have to move it again.
Sure.
We can just roll it out to the maintenance side.
Okay. I'll, I'll just change it to authorize the sheriff to, to continue to have the current option set forth for the year 2023. And you can act and the sheriff can act as our representative. All right, there you go.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to move to agenda number two, Matt Harvey.
Good evening. So I have identified two candidates for a part-time temporary employees to work in the office. I've identified Noel Ward, who's currently a student at the Catholic University of America and Colton White, who's a current student at Shepherd University. They both have interest in the criminal justice field and strong writing skills. I was proposing to hire them on a $15 an hour, 20 hours a week, for 10 weeks max for a total of $6,000 and I do have that in my budget to spend.
All right.
And their start date would be, I'll just put May the 19th.
May 19th. Okay. I'm going to approve the, the two part-time summer employees, Colton White and Noel Ward, putting down a $15 an hour, the maximum is 20 hours a week, start date will be May 19th.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I'm also here for agenda item number three. Rebecca Hall's place.
All right. Rebecca, here's your one.
I need, I need signatures.
All right, so we need to vote on this first, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, I'll move to approve to loudly commission, president, chairman to assign the vote, to sign 2023, 2024 vote, federal grant application and the state 2022 and 2023 vote, the state supplement grant application. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need signatures. It'll be later.
I'd like to have them now.
Thank you.
And here's one. I have one more item on the agenda.
Why you did?
Under Rebecca Hall. Let me get those papers back.
Oh, yeah. There you go, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I got these back and got my hires pretty, we talked about this.
I think we can set up. Yeah.
It's called bringing. So the situation with the vote of grant is they, they awarded us $110,568 last year and, and part of that was two part, we had two part compositions that were funded through that. And one of them was not filled last year because there was a lot of chaos with, they cut it, then they, they reinstated it and they, and they gave us the money and we decided not to hire and I'm fearful of future reductions. We've since taken care of that problem. However, since that position wasn't filled, there was an overpayment by Boca of $20,208.28 that was received by the county needs to be paid back.
Okay, and we make that to justice and community services?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'll just give you the motion to pay that.
And, and, and we have confirmed that, that it's, this is a legit request and it was overpaid.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll move a motion to, is it reimbursed? Payback on an amount of $20,200, is that six or eight? Eight and 28 cents to the division administrative services and justice of community services.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next we're moving to agenda number four, Laura King.
Good evening. I have two items on the agenda. The first is I have a vacancy in my department, a custodian position. I did come to you about a month ago and you approved a hire for this position, but unfortunately it didn't work out. They were only here two weeks. So I had to go back and re-interview. So I'm requesting approval of Teagan Bradley with a start date on May 24th, that's next Wednesday, starting salary of $33,000. This is a great 280-hour employee.
I'm going to approve the hire of Teagan Bradley, ready to position, 80-hour salary, 80 hours of work, starting salary $33,000 and start date was what?
May 24th.
May, start date is May 24th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
My second item is you all approved for me to have two new custodians in the new office assistant position for FY '24. I'd like to go ahead and start advertising and interviewing so I get someone in place sometime in July. We're, my custodians and all the staff are really spread thin right now and I'd like to get people in those positions as soon as I can, possible.
You're being proactive.
Yes.
Like it, like it. I'm going to motion to approve, passing the interview process for the three newly approved positions in the fleet, so this department, with two custodians and one office assistant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have agenda item number five, Russell Burks.
I will be playing Russ. I'm just before I'm out with the GIS and addressing office. You may not remember me because I don't leave my hat a hole very often. We are requesting a extension of employment, actually, for our part-time intern. We've been awarded a grant application for the State Records Management and Preservation Board Grant Program. They've awarded us $8,864 as long as we match it, $887, so like 10% of what they've awarded us. This intern is dedicated to scanning documents, reviewing equality assurance, them for quality assurance and entry into the online permitting system. He just in the last quarter has scanned over 1,300 permit documents for us and actually generated 350 GIS points for those permits for the GIS layer. We are hoping to extend him for the next six months because he's a very dedicated worker and he does a very good job with what he's been doing. We would like to keep him on board as long as we possibly can.
That can be very tedious.
Yes, it's a very tedious job, but he's very good at it and he's very thorough in making sure everything is scanned correctly and linked properly and everything, so.
I'll, I'll move to approve the Records Management and Preservation Board for him to award an amount of $8,864 with a match of $887 by the Jefferson County Commission and have our president assign the associated.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. It's on the last page. And while I'm standing here, I would like to let you all know that Todd Fagan, our previous GIS manager and still temporary employee, has been awarded a lifetime achievement award by the West Virginia GIS Association, sorry. West Virginia Association of Geospatial Professionals. Sorry, it's a mouthful and I'm a little nervous, but he has, he spent 15 years dedicated to making our department what it is now and everyone in the state of that association wanted to recognize it, so.
We were one of the first counties to implement the 911. That really says a lot.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to agenda number six, Luke Seigler.
So this is our first quarterly update on the confidence of plan updates. I've got a few things that we've been doing, that the planning commission has been doing over the last three months. But first, I'd like to actually start off with saying we have two public input meetings, our session, ground reach out to teams I would like to lead off with. The first, which should be in your agenda packet, is the first public input session that will be held on June 5th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So this is going to be our first glimpse, our first real opportunity for the public to come out and actually say the, we'll have a very similar science, recent opportunities and analysis to go over where the committee wants to envision Jefferson in the next 20 years. So that will be a great opportunity. It's going to have some small group collaboration based on what we did during the joint session with the planning commission you guys went through, followed by a individual survey after they get to see a bunch of the other small groups and the ideas they came up with. So that's the first thing I wanted to highlight. It will be possible to, this is an in-person event, but you will be able to view it on Zoom. This agenda will be posted, already is posted in its draft form. I've got to correct one thing, it is not being held in Jefferson High School's gym. It is going to be in the cafeteria, but we've put up signs and so on and so forth. We're also going to be putting that on the county commission Facebook page as well as doing the email blast. And we have also a press release that was sent out on Tuesday to a lot of our local press opportunities. And we've had a few questions and inquiries about that as well, that we're doing our best to address and answer any questions they have. It's a great opportunity, so please spread it around and let everyone know who can attend. The second, which is not, it will be in the June-July timeframe. We're kind of balancing when the survey itself will be released. It is our goals and objectives public survey. It will be open for about a month after it is released. Planning commission has been reviewing, took the first look at the draft questions for this. This is the other swing of this. If you can't make a public input meeting, this is one of the two surveys where we can get a really good grasp, it raises off of sort of cover various components that a confidence plan has to discuss. So this is, was have open forum questions as well as specific hands-on, say housing, future land use, economic developments, and a few other of those very important things we need to consider. It's also a great analysis tool for staff as we try to get a good idea of what those goals and objectives need to be for confidence plan updates. So the next time I come back for our next quarterly report, we'll hopefully have a really good idea of what the committee has said and we'll be able to present that analysis to you. All right, as to the general things, what else the planning commission has been doing, they've been hearing mostly stat presentations on our various components we have to discuss. This data has been collected by their staff research. We've had a lot of meetings with different staff. We've had a lot of meetings with different stakeholders, conservation groups, economic development groups, there's a lot to count. But some of the top things I wanted to bring up in the existing conditions, which is also a very vital important part of this, is demographics, employment, housing stock, rent prices, education, school attendance, mental services, total preservation, farming, economic development, community times. Lot going on, but we're doing our best to cover this best.
What was that, what was that third one?
Rent prices, I believe. All of this information can be found online on our twenty forty-five conference of plan update. It is a mixture of the presentations and the research portals. We're also working right now to start condensing that and writing the existing conditions in a good format so it can be presented as we go along. On a related note, one of our interns started last week and actually will be starting next week, and they're helping as a large part collecting that data and analyzing the data from the two events I've mentioned prior. So I want to say let's move along on that as well. Finally, during the planning commission things, I would mention all these presentations that have been going forward. And we've also heard from the four of our municipalities and rents coming up next month. So we've been having a great opportunity to get a lot of different input from what municipalities also like to see and highlight any collaboration looking forward. That is everything I have written down here. If you guys have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I don't have any.
And and all of you would be welcome to attend that June fifth meeting and invite people, other groups that you're involved in.
Very much so.
Spread the word.
As much as possible.
Yeah.
And and it's my understanding that this input meeting on June fifth, you're going to film it or video it, but people will not be able to make online comments, is that correct?
So this is an in-person event.
Right.
We'll be able to do some viewing. And because at the end of the meeting, we are going to be having a spot analysis, small groups of breakdown will be able to, to some capacity with the limited amount of technology that we have and do our best to videotape some of the small groups. And I'm working on ways to have our staff members try to capture some of the highlighted ideas brought up on the boards. But at the end of the session, after all the people both in person and online have the chance to see different small groups and what they put down, we're going to conclude with a small, it's like three questions of, okay, you've seen all these ideas, what are your main takeaways? Have your needs changed? What do you want to see surveyed? That'll be online and we'll be able to post that link in the Zoom chat as well.
Maybe not real time, but a way for them to respond to what they just want.
Yeah, a way for them to.
Yes. I will also say that particular one, we're going to basically, okay, we're opening it up at eight-thirty and closing by nine-thirty. So it's specifically for individuals who have had the opportunity to see the small group crowd, collaboration here, parts of the conversations, so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Look forward to seeing you June fifth. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, next we're moving on to agenda number seven, Mike Sun.
Good evening. Mike Sun, Commercial Services, A C, that is Craig Born. The update on the progress of the transition, not much to report, continuing to move forward with some of our small internal projects. Still waiting on some equipment to arrive. Supply chain issues are not over. Now that new county administrators onboard, I believe they're trying to make a little progress with the tax information so we can get all the licenses or stuff started. That's pretty much it for the transition. We have our normal request for reimbursement for the EMS transition, labor expenses, request for reimbursement for labor expenses associated with the EMS transition in the amount of three thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and twelve cents. That's for the month of people.
I'm moving motions for reimbursement for three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and twelve cents for the month of April twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, all I have in my packet is the invoice, there's no supporting document for that, no information about.
Sure, Debbie Woodhouse, something, I don't know if it's the phone or the mic. It's like some labor, we can make sure you hear that if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That's my segment. We did, okay. Okay, make sure. Okay, good deal. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries five zero.
All right, next is the request for reimbursement for the cost of supplies, equipment and services for the EMS transition in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and one cent, again, for the month of April twenty twenty-three.
I would move to approve the reimbursement for EMS, for the EMS transition for equipment and supplies, the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and one cents. This is for April of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries five zero.
It looks like our last is just an informational thing. We have a award ceremony coming up next week, Friday the twenty-sixth, eleven o'clock at our office. Two different things, one's a life-saving award with an incident that had a cardiac arrest of a young female. And she was resuscitated, flown out and made it out of the hospital with very little side effects. And she's going to have a full recovery, so we'd like to recognize those crews. We've also had a couple of children born along the way, so we're going to give out some squirt pens to a few crews as well. Like to recognize those guys. If you'd like to go, we'll be there.
I just want to make out.
Sure. That's it for us for tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to move on to agenda number eight, Wild Hill Pilot Agreement.
Tell me what I need to do.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, question, thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening, as well as members of the public who have commented on the Wild Hill Solar project tonight, as well as in the past. It's always appreciative to get feedback on our projects. I value that very much as we continue to develop projects, not only in West Virginia, but throughout the country. And feedback such as you all provide is is critical as we continue to move forward and cite and operate projects in a way that's compatible with the neighborhoods that 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 we belong. My name is Chris Turnegan. I am the principal, I'm here representing Wild Hill Solar and the principal developer, E D F Renewable Energy. With me is Chris Callis from Morgantown, West Virginia, who is the principal author of the proposed pilot agreement, lease and sublease documents that you should have in front of you.
No, no, go ahead. Okay, written.
So tonight, I would like, tonight I'm planning to present to you a little bit of information, first about myself, second about Wild Hill Solar, and then finally about the opportunity that Wild Hill Solar can provide residents in the, of the state of West Virginia and Jefferson County as well. I'm going to ask you to consider an idea and a proposal for an alternate, alternate revenue source for services that the county maintains. A little bit about my background, I've worked in renewable energies now for seventeen years on June first. And I've worked exclusively with E D F Renewable Energy for those seventeen years. I've worked on all kinds of different renewable energy technology, from wind energy to solar energy. I've worked on landfill gas plants, I've worked on biomass anaerobic digester plants, as well as battery storage. In addition to my career in renewable energy, I'm also a farmer. My family, my brothers, myself and my sister represent sixth generation of our family farm in western Minnesota. In fact, the township where my my family farm resides was originally homesteaded by my ancestor, Ole Lee, who was an immigrant from Norway. Now, Ole immigrated to the United States, he fought in the Civil War, and in late eighteen hundreds he moved west and he homesteaded in western Minnesota at the place that my parents reside today. Now, if you could imagine the landscape that Ole experienced when he first moved to western Minnesota, it's not that different from the area right around here. We don't quite have the mountains, no doubt, but we have a lot of rolling farmland, streams, wetlands, lakes, trees, things like that. Now, over the generations, six generations of our family farm, that farm has looked slightly different with each generation. Let's start it under Ole's purview of a of a small grain farm of wheat and barley. Over the years, it added soybeans, it added corn. We added kidney beans at at one point, and today we also farm sugar beans. Throughout that period, we've also raised dairy cattle, we've raised beef cattle, chickens, horses, you name it. And throughout those generations, you know, each version of that farm has looked a little different. But that farm is still there. The homestead is still there, my parents lived there, they're still there. And it's interesting because just on Tuesday, we laid to rest my great aunt, who is my grandfather's sister, who is also from the area, who grew up and farmed in the area, and married a farmer named Kenny. She was eighty-five years old. And as you might expect, at a celebration of life and a funeral service, at the conclusion, you know, there was a lot of reminiscing and discussion with relatives who haven't seen in a long time who also farm. And I found myself in a company of not only my father, but also of cousins of his and great uncles of his that I haven't seen that who also farm. And that also represent a century plus of farming in western and southwestern Minnesota. And as you can imagine with a group of farmers, the discussion inevitably turned to weather and how the spring had been going. And it struck me as I sat there listening to the stories and the discussion, how much generational knowledge was sitting in front of me? Specifically about farming. And inevitably, the discussion talked about high interest rates and inflationary period that that we're in right now in our economy as a whole. And stories started to be told about the late eighties, which was a pretty tough time for farmers, for those of you that went through it. And at the end of that discussion, I asked a question of the group that was left, how do you do it? How is it that, as you see in the news, the small farmers are forced into consolidation, dairy farms are going out of business, yet you all are still sitting here with a century-plus farm? How did you do it? And as you might expect, we got a lot of different answers, but the one theme that came through the discussion loud and clear essentially was being able to be dynamic and adopt and change. So as you can imagine, from the late eighteen hundreds today, all of the circumstances that a farmer may have dealt with, between the Great Depression, between high inflationary periods, weather patterns, and all of that, what what kept those guys going and their operation viable was being able to pivot their operations to change and to take advantage of opportunities when they could. And that's important, and I think it's an important lesson for all of us. And I thought back, as I was coming out here, to that landscape question of when Ole first came to western Minnesota, you know, what did he see? And if he went there today, what does he see and how different is it really? And while there's changes, there's probably a few less wetlands, maybe a few less trees. He sees corn standing, he's going to see soybeans standing. Sugar beans might be a bit of a shock to him, I don't know. But the other interesting thing that he sees, my part of western Minnesota, are windmills operating and solar panels operating throughout that landscape. And they've been operating for quite some time. And it struck me really that, and and what I want to convey to to you guys tonight, ahead of more of the details that I'm going to present about the Wild Hill Solar, is that, you know, even though sometimes change is is hard and it's scary, sometimes things need to change to stay the same. Because our egg economy there is still the number one employer of our county, the number one taxpayer to our school system. And that's not that different from here in Jefferson County, it really isn't. And while there are some changes to the landscape and the way that people farm has certainly changed over the years, the deployment of renewable energy is a boon to our agricultural economy. Doesn't look the same, I understand that, and beauty is always in the eye of the beholder. But what Wild Hill Solar and other renewable energy projects do is not that different from what happened, what's happening out in the farms right now. It's turning a natural resource into energy. Forty percent of the corn that we grow in this country goes to fuel. Quite a bit of the soybeans we produce goes to feed, goes to food, but it goes to products. Our egg economy touches our lives in many different ways, including energy. And what Wild Hill Solar represents is a support to our egg community and an opportunity for change to maintain that egg economy and keep those farms in business going forward. And I wanted to share that with you because I think that's important context as I go through this presentation. Because I sit here before you, not as a slick renewable energy developer, right? But as somebody who believes in the benefits of renewable energy, not only for Jefferson County, but for West Virginia and for the United States, but also as a farmer who believes in renewable energy and believes that renewable energy will be a path forward to the future of our egg economy. And it will support our egg and our farmers and those that they employ and the whole supply chain from there. So if you could skip forward. So some of you are new, I think, from the last time I presented here, so just wanted to take a few minutes to once again summarize what exactly is the Wild Hill Solar project. So very briefly, and I hope to not spend too much time on this, Wild Hill Solar is a passive four-volt solar project that we are proposing, located near the intersection of Old Shenondale Road and Cable Town Road. The project encompasses approximately eighty, eight hundred and forty-one acres, not all of which will be used to host facilities, but the majority of will. The energy that's collected by these solar panels will be conditioned and interconnected onto the existing FirstEnergy double pole gate to Millville, one thirty-eight K V transmission line. This is the transmission line that you see running parallel to Cable Town Road. The project will not encompass any new, or not include any new overhead transmission lines. The power will be collected on D C cabling underground that will move to a collection substation at the site of the generators and then it will be transmitted, interconnected into the transmission system and distributed from it. As it stands, we anticipate starting construction in twenty twenty-four, the completion by year end twenty twenty-five. The equipment that we are estimating to be used here has a useful life of thirty-nine years. There was a comment in the public comment section tonight about a discrepancy between the documents that you all saw and the presentation I'm I'm getting, and that was a clerical error. We are seeking a pilot arrangement for the full. We are seeking a pilot arrangement for the full useful life of the project of thirty-nine years. So we'll be happy to to make that correction, as well as any other changes that may be warranted as discussed by the commission tonight. So this is a snapshot of the project concept plan. The concept plan for this project was approved in late in the late summer of two thousand and twenty-two by both the Jefferson County Planning Commission and the zoning board. The project is a little bit uniquely cited in that part of the project falls within the urban growth boundary of Jefferson County, and part of it falls outside of the urban growth boundary, and that urban growth boundary is represented on the on this slide with that large purple dashed line. Based on the the Jefferson County solar ordinance, the project needed to receive a conditional use permit for that area outside of the urban growth boundary and needed concept approval for solar as a permitted and principal use for that area inside the urban growth boundary. And as I mentioned earlier, those those approvals were granted in, I believe, August of of two thousand and twenty-two. The project encompasses all presently farmed property with four different families that own those, and they'll continue to own that property. The project itself is cited under a leasehold interest, so we lease the opportunity to place and operate our solar project on that farm from the landowners. They receive an annual rent with a fixed rent with an annual escalator for the life of the and the term of the lease itself. We do have vegetative management screening included into our concept plan on particular boundaries, and you can note here from our map that the project is set back from the roadways quite some distance. I think the closest point that the project reaches to Cable Town Road is approximately a thousand feet. In most cases, we're well past fifteen hundred feet for the proposed facilities. The facility itself will include the albanized steel I-beams that will be driven into the ground. No concrete will be used for those foundations, aluminum racking, photovoltaic solar cells on top of that racking, inverters, underground DC collection cables, a switchyard, main power transformer, and accompanying conditioning and safety equipment, such as switches, breakers, dead-end structures, and a control house, all located on the on the project footprint here on the on the concept plan. So a project like this is new. It's different. It's not something that people have had a lot of experience with. And there are some in this community and other communities that believe that projects like this stand to benefit the owner and only the owners. And that's simply not the case. So I'd like to take a few minutes here to discuss the benefit of projects like this to the broader community of Jefferson County. I've summed them up here, but I'm going to start quickly, going back to my story about change is sometimes needed for things to stay the same with the annual lease payments and what that means for the farmers that participated projects like Wild Hill Solar and others. For those of you that that may understand farming, and I think it's even those that don't, it is one of the riskiest business models out there. There's not a lot of businesses, right, that will will spend and invest a large sum of capital at the beginning of each year without any certainty of revenue at the end of the year, without any certainty on the price of their product, the weather, the cost of their inputs, all of that changes from day to day. That's all to say farming is a hard business to do, and it's a risky business to do. And as a result, we are losing farms. Renewable energy in Wild Hill specifically provides a hedge against that risk for local farmers. Wild Hill Solar and other renewable energies provide fixed income, not tied to commodity market swings, not tied to the weather, not tied to the price of fuel, for example. And the farmers that participate in our projects use that diversified fixed revenue income to maintain their farming operations, and in some cases, expand them. And that's important. That's important to me as a farmer, and that's important to farmers that I've talked to all over the country, including here in Jefferson County. So there's some that argue that these projects take farming away from our community. That's not the case. Renewable energy projects work with today's ag. It looks different, but it is ag. And it's going to maintain farms here in Jefferson County long into the future. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about number two, and that's the tax revenue that projects like this provide counties like Jefferson. And I want to highlight that revenue because it's unique in that unlike other developments that you're probably more used to seeing, such as residential housing, commercial manufacturing, the revenue that's provided by renewable energy projects such as Wild Hill, and specifically the way that we are proposing it under this particular pilot arrangement, does not cost the county and its citizens anything. This is an opportunity for straight revenue. We don't need new roads to be built. We don't need new utilities to be added, new infrastructure added. It's an opportunity to raise revenue for important services for the county that serve all citizens. Now, I've been here working in this community for four years now, and I've grown to love it. I really have. Despite some of the opposition to solar that shows up at meetings like this, by and large, the feedback I get is supportive, it's warm, it's understanding, and I really appreciate that. And what I've heard, and I think was mentioned earlier, there are needs that Jefferson County has, whether it's new schools, whether it's paid firefighter services, a transition of EMS services. What Wild Hill provides is an opportunity to pay for some of that without burdening the citizens here with additional taxes. And again, no cost. The third opportunity and benefit that a project like this provides are jobs. Now, believe it or not, there there are long-term jobs available and short-term jobs. Wild Hill Solar LLC has made a commitment with the local trade and building union here to ensure that jobs for the construction of this project come locally. And that's a commitment we make here in Jefferson County. We make it all over the country because that is important to us, and we know it's important to the host communities for our projects. For long-term ONM positions, I heard some comments earlier that that's a drop in the bucket that's meaningless, and I argue against that. For a small project and ninety-two and a half megawatts on eight hundred acres isn't as big a project as you might expect. For long-term, high-paying jobs with full benefits, I think that has meaning, and I think that has meaning to the residents of Jefferson County. And it's just a beginning because I've done projects all over the country, and I've got people that I work with and I see every day that started as an ONM tech on a wind project in Iowa. EDF provides career paths and opportunities across the spectrum of the renewable energy industry, not just ONM tech projects, such as as what we would have specifically here, but career paths for people as well. I've worked for them for seventeen years, and that's not and that and that's by choice, right? This is a company that I believe in that provides great benefits and great opportunities. So I know to some, four long-term ONM jobs may not sound like much, but I can introduce you to quite a few techs across this country that would speak differently to that and speak to what those jobs mean to them, right? Now, these jobs also pay taxes, the temporary construction positions. In addition to workers in the community, projects like this provide ancillary services and benefits. Those employees need to live somewhere, they need to fuel their trucks up somewhere, they need to eat somewhere, and that's all going to come here locally. I can introduce you to a cafe owner from Colmore, North Dakota, on a wind project that I developed four or five years ago, whose business would have gone under but for our project and the revenue that came from those construction workers and our long-term ONM positions. And I can introduce you to all kinds of people from our projects all over the country with similar stories. Those jobs mean something, and they are important to a lot of people, and I think they're important to Jefferson County, and we can bring them. And then the last item that I wanted to highlight is the local services and community support. EDF Renewable Energy is what's called an independent power producer. Our business model is to own and operate renewable energy power plants. As you've seen, this project has a useful lifetime, expected lifespan of thirty-nine years. That's fairly common. Our projects are long-term. So when we when we introduce a concept, an idea, and ultimately a project to a community, we're introducing ourselves as a potential citizen of that community. We recognize that we're not here to develop, build, and lead. We're here to develop, build, and stay. And I look forward to the opportunity where local citizens here are coworkers of mine with EDF. Understanding that we desire and expect to be a part of that community, we want to make that our involvement positive. And we do that initially through outreach and through collaboration with local services. Over the last four years, I've spent time and met with our volunteer firefighters in the area. I've spent time with the Boys and Girls Club in the area. I've spent time with a joint Catholic ministries group in the area, and we've made donations to each of those organizations because we believe in the mission and the efforts that they're doing. To date, to a tune of seventeen, over seventeen thousand dollars locally in the in the just the past four years that I've been involved in the project. And we anticipate those sort of commitments to continue throughout the the life of of this particular project. Now, as part of the public permit record for this project, both at the state PSC and at the county level, we also put together an economic impact study to understand what, in real dollars, we think the economic impact might be of a project like this. That study is available if anybody wants to review it. I highlight here that the estimation for the first year of operations and construction, the net benefit to Jefferson County in West Virginia is a hundred and forty-three point seven million dollars. Where I come from, that is meaningful. And I expect that it's meaningful here as well. Let's keep going. Okay, let's get to the meat of this. I've listed here those taxes and fees that the Wild Hill Solar project is subject to. What I am proposing tonight is an alternative to the state BNO, Business and Occupation Tax, and Ad Valorem Property Tax that would be supplied the Wild or would be levied against the Wild Hill Project. I and EDF likes West Virginia and likes Jefferson County for this project for a number of reasons. One of those reasons is that you guys benefit from some forward-thinking legislators and and authors of your tax code. If you look through the West Virginia Statutory Code, you can see and you can calculate the Ad Valorem and state business and occupation tax for any business, as long as you have some numbers to work with. The authors of that tax structure and the legislators that adopted that had the foresight to recognize that this tax code may not work for every business and under every market condition going forward. They also had the foresight to know that tax code is very difficult to change. Some might say impossible. But they added an opportunity for flexibility and an alternative option for local tax levying bodies to consider as an incentive for economic growth and to bring business into their communities. What is that option that's put in there? That's a payment in lieu of taxes. Now, there are two statutory codes that provide tax levying bodies the opportunity to grant a pilot. We are seeking your consideration and approval under a specific statute, a statute specific, excuse me, to energy-generated projects. But there is another statute that also provides the opportunities for pilots to more general businesses. And I believe this county has an experience has experience with that from maybe some previous previous businesses. But I want to highlight that this opportunity, while it may seem like a special favor to some, is in the statutory code. And I'm asking you to think, why is it in the statutory code? If it's a special favor. And I also want to highlight that any business that wants to, since this is a statutory code issue, can seek a pilot arrangement. It's not unique to Wild Hill Solar. It's not unique to renewables. It's available to any and all who seek it. I'm going to pause for a second and ask Chris if he has any discussion he wants to add on the statutory piece.
Not right now, but I unless there's something specific you'd like me to address. I will have a couple points to make after Chris is done, but nothing right now.
Okay, we can go. Thank you. So how it works, I might lean on Chris a little bit here because I don't want to get above my skis. But as we have proposed, county commission, and in fact, under the statute, all tax levying bodies of Jefferson County would have to approve and agree to a pilot proposal for it to be effective. For Jefferson County, as I understand that, that's the county commission, that's the sheriff's department, and the Board of Education. Each of those entities would have to adopt a resolution that authorizes the pilot arrangement, which includes a pilot agreement that outlines the conditions under which the pilot is granted, as well as the approved and accepted revenue stream under that pilot arrangement. The unique, a little bit of a unique situation here is that in order to exempt the project from the state BNO and Ad Valorem property taxes, the real property interests that we hold with our landowners has to be conveyed to the county commission, who would then lease it back to the Wild Hill Solar Project under a lease arrangement. So you've got three steps. That's adoption of an ordinance granting the pilot, conveyance of the real property interest to the county, and the leaseback provision to to Wild Hill Solar. I'm not going to spend any time tonight going through the specifics of those lease agreements, but we look forward to a discussion with the county commission and the county attorney and any other representative that you guys may deem necessary if needed. We're also open to discussion on those terms and flexibility on those terms. So dollar figures. What we have proposed to the county as well as to the school board consists of a pilot arrangement with an annual fixed payment escalating. at two and a half percent a year, a capital contribution to the school district, a one-time payment, and a lease payment to the county without an escalator annually for thirty-nine years. The interesting part of the statutory code for these pilot arrangements is that the revenue generated under the pilot agreement itself is subject to distribution in the same fashion that property taxes are distributed. So with this slide, I made an estimate on how that money would be dispersed based on the present school bond levy and tax distribution. Now, this could change from year to year, so this is just an example. But we would anticipate that under a pilot arrangement with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year payment that would be distributed approximately, like I've demonstrated here, one hundred and fifty-four thousand a year to the school district, forty-six thousand a year to Jefferson County, escalating annually. The lease revenue, however, is not subject to the same distribution requirements and would be at the county commission's discretion as to how that revenue could and would be used. We heard tonight, and I've heard from others, I'm sure there's plenty of ideas of how and where that may be effective here locally. In total, you're looking at, you know, just about thirteen million dollars in total payments over thirty-nine years under the pilot. Another fifteen million in lease revenues over the thirty-nine years as well. Now, this comes without any costs to the company. As I mentioned earlier, we don't anticipate, and we're not expected to need roads, any additional EMS services beyond what's already in place. And so this is an opportunity for Jefferson County to take advantage of revenue and fund services that are needed for everybody. A moment quick to just highlight that a pilot arrangement such as we've proposed here is not unique to Jefferson County and certainly not unique to West Virginia. These type of arrangements are quite common in the energy industry regardless of fuel type. You can see here I've listed just some recent projects in West Virginia that include gas, that include coal, that include renewables. I've also highlighted some recent pilots that we've done in other parts of the U.S. So for those that may say that this is favoritism or special treatment, it's not. It's something that's provided for in statutory code that in a tool that is used by counties and states throughout the U.S. And I asked that the county, Jefferson County, to consider our proposal in that way. And finally, just a quick comparison. The parcels that encompass the project as proposed are listed here. Now, we're not using all of these parcels. But you can see the twenty-twenty-two property tax that would be granted without the Wild Hill Solar Project totaling approximately twelve thousand a year in revenue for Jefferson County. With a pilot arrangement that we've proposed, that same land and that same property tax staying in place would now generate, the delta would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars for each of those parcels per year. Again, at no cost to Jefferson County. Important to highlight for some because it can be confusing, the pilot arrangement and the Advilorum property tax that a project would pay is a part parcel from the real property tax that the landowner pays. No effect on that. That doesn't go away, that doesn't change. The pilot revenue that we are proposing would be in addition to the property tax that will be paid, that continued to be paid by the landowners. Now, should there be a new valuation of that underlying property, which has zoned all agriculture today and is anticipated to remain that way under the Wild Hill proposal? Should the project, the signing and operation of the project increase the value of that property? We have conditions in place where we will reimburse the landowner for those added tax burden. So I just wanted to highlight. Chris, do you have anything you want to add on some of this?
Yes, I do have a number of things I'd like to share with you. Now's the appropriate time. Again, my name is Chris Callis. I'm with Jackson Kelly in Charleston, West Virginia. I was Chris Ted, and I don't love the fact that I have to follow Chris Turnagan talking. He's a great presenter. I was born and raised in Morgantown and spent my entire career in West Virginia. And about that thirty-one years, about twenty-five years or so, assisting independent power producers like EDF in getting projects cited in West Virginia. And much of that work has been assisting them in pilot arrangements, gas, solar, coal, gas peakers, all of those kinds of projects I've worked on, including some that were on earlier slot that Chris showed. So pilot arrangements under the statute that he mentioned, eight nineteen four, which is specific to electric generating facilities, are really quite common. I understand that this county has some history with a particularly controversial project that was done under a different statute. Really has nothing to do with electricity generating facility pilot arrangements. It really comes down to two documents, as Chris mentioned, a pilot agreement and a lease agreement. Those are documents that, you know, over the years, basically take a pretty standard form. We tweak them, make improvements on them as we go along from year to year. But, you know, it's the same. If you put them aside once that were done ten years ago, they would look very similar. I can tell you that over the years that I've done these, including a couple, in the last couple of years, they do get looked at and have benefited from the review of very competent counsel hired by county commissions and school boards to protect their interests in those. Those improvements are found in the documents that we've provided to Mr. Proctor. I would anticipate that he and I would work to get these documents where they need to be in order for the commission to consider them. As Chris said, the scripters or clerical error on the thirty versus thirty-nine years, that's, I apologize for that. It is a correction that needs to be made. I'm going to address very briefly, just a couple of things that I heard at the outset today that I think need to be addressed. The, there is a cancellation option, Mr. H. Simpson mentioned in the documents. That is typical. In fact, if a project like this were to no longer exist, the owner were to go out of business, let's say, you would want there to be a cancellation option on that party's behalf and to bring down the pilot structure. That's what it's intended to do. Because going forward, you would want the taxes on the facility to be based on what the assessed value is. He also brought up the question of thirty-nine years and how do you enforce something going that far into the future? And that's a relatively simple answer as well. If payments aren't being made and there's demand and no payments made for the payment in lieu of taxes of the lease agreement within the provided time, then the county commission can cancel whole deal. And then taxes are due and payable at the assessed appraised rates. So the owner has every incentive to make those payments so that that outcome doesn't ensue. There was a suggestion by Mr. Rockwell that the county would be liable for all manner of things having to do with the operation of the facility. That's simply not the case. It is a net lease under the lease agreement, which Mr. Proctor has reviewed, as well as standard commercially reasonable indemnity provisions that would run in favor of the county. The county effectively owns the leasehold and fee interest and nothing more. All the benefits and burdens of operating the facility rests with the project developer, who was the lessee under that arrangement. Mr. Tapp suggested that there was millions of dollars left on the table. And I've been to many of these meetings before county commissions, and that usually is, you know, a complaint that we hear. And although Chris didn't really go into it, I feel need to say, pilot agreements are for projects that would not be here otherwise. If there's no pilot arrangement and that makes a project infeasible economically, then there will be no tax revenue. Those millions of dollars simply won't be there. And that is, if that were not the case, we wouldn't be here. So it is, I think, erroneous to compare the taxes that would be paid if a taxpayer or project owner were paying the full statutory rate and compare that against what is being requested in the pilot. Because under no set of circumstances would the project be built without the pilot arrangement. And I'm sure Chris can vouch for that. In Wild Hill's case, the project, in his terms I've heard of use before, is, this doesn't pencil financially with the the amount of property tax, and specifically, personal property tax that is that is pressed in West Virginia. I'm sure all of you will recall, last year, and then two, and the idea that the abatement or removal of personal property taxes on machinery, equipment, and inventory, that really is the biggest part of the tax burden here for entities like Wild Hill. And that's what separates the tax burden from what it might face in other states. So it's important to realize that's the rather uncommon burden that an entity like Pilot Hill and others who saw pilot agreements are looking to get around. Finally, you know, one comment or kind of question the fiscal responsibility of the county commission. I'd like to suggest to you that by entering into an agreement that provides for stable, predictable revenue, contractually obligated for a given term, one that doesn't have the potential of moving up and down with assessments, which you don't control anyway. Our projects are assessed by the state. That is a very fiscally responsible approach for a county commission to take because you can lock in that revenue in your budget projections going forward in a way that you could not do otherwise. So I would take issue with that characterization and suggest that it really is a fiscally responsible thing for a county commission to be engaged in. Finally, one small thing. Chris indicated that the sheriff needs to sign the pilot agreement. That's not the case. The sheriff is involved in distributing pilot revenue, but doesn't need to sign the agreement. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the technicalities of the documents. And I'm sure Chris is here to answer questions as well.
I do have a couple of questions, a couple of views, not about the documents, but about the, about the project itself. I haven't heard anything about the decommissioning of the product, what happens at the end of its useful life. And I've heard some scary stories about the dangerous, you know, materials that are inside of these panels.
I can speak to the decommissioning. Sure. I think it was two years ago, the legislature passed a statute that, it's the Wind and Solar Reclamation, citation that raised me right now. And it puts the Department of Environmental Protection as the agency responsible for ensuring that owners of wind and solar projects post bonds and enter into decommissioning agreements that cover exactly the concerns that you have. Basically, there is a obligation to post security in the form of a bond or a letter of credit that the state controls. It's administered by DEP. And that's, that's a, an obligation that this project and other solar and wind projects that aren't grandfathered under that statute, which is what wouldn't be, would have to, would have to comply with. The reason for having that bond is that if the end of a project's life, if the owner were to up and run and not take everything out, there would be money available administered by DEP to do just that.
So what happens to the product at the end of its life?
So most likely, there will be a portion of the components that will be recycled, such as the aluminum, most likely the steel can all be reused again. And the panels will be either refurbished and reused in some smaller capacity and other different application. And inevitably, there will be some of the other material that will be left.
I understand this project is divided up by maybe four or five different family farms. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
What if at some point in the life of the project, one or more of the families decides they don't want to continue and they want to take that part of their farm back and return it to farm?
But that would be a decision that, you know, EDF and the landowner would have to sit down and discuss and decide on. Obviously, for an entity like EDF, there would be a significant cost, right, to decommissioning a portion of a project potentially in the middle of its, of its expected revenue stream. I could say in seventeen years of doing this, not run into that situation. You know, the discussions that we've had and that all landowners have with developers and projects of this capacity, you know, this isn't an overnight decision. You know, this is a long-term commitment and a long-term relationship that they're establishing with us. And so they go into these decisions not lighthearted. And they come to a conclusion of participating or not, you know, after some pretty serious consideration. And so I have not run into, you know, a situation like that. You know, so it'd be hard for me to suppose what exactly would transpire without having any personal experience with it.
I've done some research on renewable company, green companies. I do know that occasionally they fail. And I'm curious to know what will happen to the product if EDF fails? What will then happen?
Sure. So let me answer first by maybe just highlighting EDF's reputation in the renewable industry is, is very strong. In fact, we're one of the oldest IPPs in North America. Forty years of operation dates back to really the initial deployment of renewable energy in the U.S., which was out in California. EDF started as a group of Danish wind technicians that were working in California under contract under some of the first gen wind turbines. They grew to include development in addition to operations and maintenance of wind turbines, and ultimately into ownership and operations, and stand as one of the largest and one of the most successful IPPs in the U.S. today. Should EDF, for whatever reason, go bankrupt, any number of things could happen, right? You've got a typical bankruptcy arrangement where creditors or other stakeholders in the company would have an opportunity to come in and operate.
the company would have an opportunity to come in and operate an asset and continue to receive the revenue or dismantle it at their discretion, right? And to Chris's point, you know, if a situation comes where the project simply does not, no longer operates, and nobody's taking ownership of it, you know, it would be decommissioned under the terms, not only of the lease agreement that we have with the landowners, but also with the decommissioning agreement that would be placed at the state of West Virginia.
Where, where does EDF Renewables get the product that they turn into solar panels?
So in this case of Wild Hill Solar, it being a solar project, so EDF, similarly to maybe other large IPPs, we have what we call master supply agreements with the major solar panel manufacturers. So those are companies like Canadian Solar, First Solar, and we negotiate those terms and that volume. And then we deploy specific, project-specific purchase agreements as projects come to fruition ultimately. And so we do cite, you know, panels from different suppliers. Of course, there's different sizes that are available, and, you know, the technology is constantly evolving and things. So we, to the extent that we're able, you know, commercially deploy, you know, the most cost-productive, you know, and energy-productive panels that we can. But we have, we have supplies, supply agreements with a number of different manufacturers. Same thing on the wind side for wind turbines. You know, obviously, it's different companies.
The, the material that goes into the solar panels, I think we talked about it, it's called silicon dioxide.
That's the raw material.
Okay. And where is that mined?
Well, we do have mines in the U.S. The majority right now of solar panels that are deployed in the U.S. do come from overseas. You know, the supply, renewable, solar energy is still, is still new technology. It's not deployed nearly at the level, let's say, wind energy has, or other technologies. And so as a result, we do see, you know, a lot of that material coming from overseas into the U.S. Now, I anticipate, as projects come online, that we will see a domestic supply chain emerge, very similar to what we saw with wind energy. The very first years of wind energy, those nacelles and turbines were coming from overseas, primarily, they were primarily Danish-built. But now, we have a robust, you know, U.S. supply chain, and so a lot of those components are coming from plants all over the U.S. And for a typical project, they may come from three or four different plants, actually.
Would you please tell me where overseas this material is coming from?
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't, excuse me, we have not locked the tech for Wild Hill Solar yet. That particular, that decision will happen, what we call our financial investment decision, which would be looming and be subject to acceptance of a pilot agreement here. Once we lock that technology, I can answer that question very specifically. But as it stands right now, we don't, I don't, I can't tell you exactly what plant they're coming from. Now, again, across the solar industry, as I said, 70% are still coming from overseas. That's mainly coming from Southeast Asia and China.
So I did my research. I, we had our conversation over the video conference recently, and I really appreciated that. That did help me. I did do a lot of research with the presentation that we've been given, and I did have a short comment that I would like to make about this project. One of the huge selling points of these solar projects is that they're supposedly better for the environment than supposedly dirty coal. The vast majority of these solar panels are manufactured in China, using the very coal-fired plants that we're trying to close down here in the U.S. to generate huge amounts of energy required for their production. The panels are built in China, using weaker slave labor. The batteries required to store the solar energy are made from raw materials obtained from strip lines in Congo. The working conditions in these mines are horrible, and they often include child slave labor. In the name of environmentalism, these projects fund the Communist Chinese Party, support slave labor in China, child labor in the Congo, and they destroy American industry, all in the name of an environmental benefit that seems to be a mirage. All that we're doing is pushing the supposed environmental impact to a different part of the world. My question is this: Why should we be using tax dollars to support a business model that is only profitable through slave labor and government subsidies?
That's a big question. And I will not pretend to be qualified to speak to foreign labor issues or situations. I don't know if any of that's true or not.
It is true. So I got my information from the U.S. Department of Labor website. The Bureau of International Labor Affairs has recently, has a report put out in September 28th, 2022. It does document China as being horrible in terms of human rights issues, forced labor, which of course is slavery. I can't support it. If you're interested, I'd be happy to give you where I got this information, and you can see for yourself. But we're not producing this in America now. This is all coming from China. I read that Russia is another big mining operation. And China and Russia, I think everybody here knows, are not friends of the United States of America. And I worry about that. I really do. And I have a hard time giving our tax dollars to a company that supports that.
Well, I wouldn't say we support that by any stretch of the imagination.
But you're buying from them.
Any, any more than you and I support that in the purchases of our goods that come from China in our everyday lives. So if you're making that parallel, I would argue that we're all guilty of that, you know?
But what you're trying to do, with all due respect, is push a company that can't stand on its own in order to make money. And I'm very concerned about these human rights violations especially.
Understood. EDF has stood on its own for 30 years, 40 years, I would argue. And we're doing nothing, I think, egregious in a request for a pilot. Now, you may want to condition that request based on your concerns, and that's totally normal. But I, I do have an issue characterizing our use of solar panels as supporting slave labor.
But that's where, but that's where this product is mined, that goes into these panels.
No more comments.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the time.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
That I pulled out of the presentation. So let me, I'm going to start with the positive impact several months. So you're mentioning 200 temporary construction jobs. What is the term of the project? Do you know, start to finish, what would the term?
Oh, construction, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're looking at 12 to 14 months, whether dependent.
And what is the average salary for those construction jobs?
I don't know that up. Now, you're going to have, you're going to have skilled labor, general labor. It's going to vary depending on the application, right? We've got high-voltage technicians, you know, versus pile operators, for example, bulldozer operators, those types of things. So it's going to be, it's going to vary, presumably, but I could probably easily get you some numbers on that. I just don't know.
So, yeah, okay. That, that's fine. I just, I mean, you've done other projects, so you can't tell me if it's $50 an hour, or $75 an hour, or $20 an hour?
No, it's going to be very market-specific, right?
Great. Um, let's see. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I heard you say, over a four-year period, you've donated or contributed 17,000 to the community.
Correct.
To, it sounds like three specific organizations, including?
No, it's more than that, actually. You can probably pull it up here, maybe if you're interested. So Boys and Girls Club of Jefferson County, Jefferson County Fair Association, that's two of the fairgrounds, and with a lot of the administrators of the fair, talk a little bit about that. Jefferson County Community Ministries, as well as the Citizens Fire Company, and the local 4-H.
So you've made application for a CUP and a PDU, permitted use for the, or PUP, I guess is permitted use. You made those applications?
Correct. And those were approved in, I believe, August of 22.
So on the real property tax comparison, I'm just wondering, so at the bottom of your foot, you mentioned that these underlying lands remain zoned agriculture. So I'm trying to reconcile that, since they're not grown, farming, raising cattle, it's solar panels. So it's remaining agriculture, which is assessed and taxed differently than what residential, industrial, commercial corporations are taxed, right?
Okay. So I'm just. I mean, keep in mind, right, at the end of the project, that ground is very easily returned right back into what you're categorizing as traditional real crop agriculture.
Correct.
That's very different from an industrial complex that's never going to be brought back to.
I agree. I'm just, it's usually agriculture is taxed at a lower or a reduced rate than what?
Sure. Oh, I got you.
Business is taxed at, or industry, or whatever.
Now, you know, that, that's my expectation, based on my understanding of zoning. You know, the project was permitted as a conditional use to the Ag District, right? And the ordinance provides solar as a permitted principal use in the Ag District within the Irving Road boundaries. Now, if something changes to that effect in the future, and that underlying ground is zoned differently, you know, at the county's discretion, right, and then assessed differently, we do have a commitment to our landowners that if that is assessed at a higher tax than what you would receive presently, then part of our lease agreement is we pick that cost up. It's not a burden that gets placed onto the property owners, for example.
Do you know if any of these properties are under the farmland protection?
In what capacity?
Well, we have a farmland protection.
They don't have conservation.
Okay. All right. That's what I was curious. And then lastly, it kind of goes with hand-in-hand with something that Commissioner Kraus spoke about. So there is an existing solar facility that is currently under construction that did not request a pilot program from the county, or the state for that matter, any type of subsidy for their tax. And I'm understanding, if I heard you correctly, you would not be able to build or bring this project here without some type of subsidy. You wouldn't be able to sustain or build a project. Can you help me understand that, the comparison with the other project?
Yeah. Well, so I can't speak to another project's financials. I don't have that information. And I think it's, as far as I understand, I think it's true and accurate to say that we're the first ones to sit in front of you and ask for a pilot. But I would also, I think it's also a reasonable assumption to state that we will not be the last. Now, I can't speak to the specific actions of other developers. But as I, as I captured in the slide deck there, that the tax liability that would be levied against a project of this size is insurmountable from a financial performance perspective. And while each project will be somewhat unique in their costing structure, just like any other business, perhaps somebody got a better arrangement with a particular vendor or something, by and large, they're not going to vary very much. And so I would be very surprised if you do not hear more of these proposals in the near future.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get at, we've got one that's obviously building, that needed no assistance from us, and didn't come and ask. And perhaps you're right, no doubt, you might not be the last to ask. But I'm just trying to reconcile, particularly for the citizens, why your project would need assistance or subsidy, and why other projects would not. It's the same type of project.
I apologize in advance for answering a question with a question, but how do you know that they don't?
How do I know what?
That they, that they don't need a pilot.
I don't know that they don't need a pilot. They are building, and they have been here to us to ask for one that's.
That doesn't mean they won't come.
Correct. I'm just trying to bring some comfort and rectify the, yes, the request.
Yeah. And I'm just, and I think it's an absolutely reasonable question, you know, because I would ask myself the same thing. In my experience, working with EDF, and, you know, going back to our success, and the reason that we're still here, you know, to, Commissioner Kraus commented, there are a lot of developers that aren't, that haven't made, right? So that speaks a little bit to the quality of their work, maybe the risks they're willing to take, the decisions they make, right? EDF makes the right decisions, and does so at the right time. I can't say that for everybody. So I can't, I can't, I can't answer that much more directly, because I don't know what, you know, what their decision process looks like. I don't know what their finances look like. But I do know that if you look at the general economics of a renewable energy project like Wild Hill Solar, it does not pencil without a pilot.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Jane. Go ahead.
I just do a follow-up to your statement that, you know, it wouldn't be financially viable without a pilot. So why did you pursue it? How much money have you already put into it, before you even know whether you might, may or may not get a pilot?
Very good question. Yes. So back to an earlier comment I made. Why did we pick Jefferson County in West Virginia? Now, there is a very long and detailed answer to that. But that answer includes the fact that West Virginia, by statute, allows for a pilot opportunity for projects such as this. Had that not been in there, we would not be sitting here today. And the project that we have proposed and the county has approved wouldn't exist. Now, we take an iterative approach to our investment risk management. I mentioned earlier that we haven't made a technology law, for example, that comes at a final investment decision. And so the idea is, the concept, right, is that we need to de-risk this project cost and revenue stream before we make a final investment decision and put real money, serious money at risk. Now, there is a carrying cost to development, no doubt. But that is, that is the cost of business for us, that we incur as a developer, and we're okay incurring that. You know, but what we're not okay doing is putting down, you know, two $200 to $250 million to construct a solar facility without the certainty that we, we have a tax structure that works for our project and that's not going to put, drive this project, you know, into the red financial. And I have to prove that to my board before I get approval to build anything anywhere. Other companies may take a different approach, but that's the approach that EDF has taken and it's been successful for us. And I believe in it, I really do. You gotta have your ducks in a row before you start spending real money. And part of getting our ducks in a row is understanding your all's concern and willingness to work with us on a, on a pilot, such as the one we've proposed.
How much money would you save by avoiding the pain of the taxes?
Yeah, I have that on a slide. Let me see. So that is captured on slide 13. So this is an estimate based on what the state, how the state could assess the project. So this is an estimate, please. I wouldn't expect this to be, you know, exact, but it gives you a scale estimate. So without a pilot over the 39 years, based on my calculations, the project would incur 110, almost $111 million in taxes.
I'm, you know, I see you have your figures. I'm going to, when we get a chance, to contact the assessor and see what her numbers come up with. And my one concern is, you know, you were, I think you made a statement, you know, with perhaps the assessment was based on zoning and that's not what property tax, you know, assessment is based on. It's on its current use. So that's, it doesn't matter whether it's in the urban road boundary or not. So that's something I wanted to correct. I'm, I'm curious why the length of this proposed pilot is 39 years? When I've been told my research is that 30 years is the lifetime of a solar facility.
So I think Chris addressed our clerical error between the documents and up here. The, but if you've done some research that shows 30 years, that's not uncommon. And that's, that's a representative, it's a representation of essentially the advancement of the technology. So three or four years ago, the panels that we were sourcing had a 30-year useful life. Now, they're 39 years. You know, and I expect that, you know, to probably up and flow as, as it becomes more widely distributed, more widely used, you know, more money gets put into research and development and new technologies are evolving all the time.
Well, and I think you've expressed some of your concerns with decommissioning and so forth. And, you know, we know, we will hopefully have a bond in place for that. And West Virginia DEP is supposed to be the, the larger enforcement agency. But I've got to tell you right now, I have no personal belief that that will be done properly. It's just a history of the state that we do not have a strong DEP enforcement. But that's our problem we have to work on. And I think it's a reality we have to recognize too.
Chris, you're telling, I want to jump in for just a second before I forget. You mentioned contacting the assessor about how a project like this would be appraised.
Right.
Energy generation projects are appraised by the Property Tax Division of the State Tax Department.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, but I still want to hear from my local assessor.
Yes, understood.
Well, first.
I do have another question. What other locations has EDF sought for their other pilot agreements?
So of recent, I've, I've actually got them up here. So, and, and the list is much longer. These are the most recent projects. We've got one in Ohio, two in Indiana, one in Missouri, and one in.
I'm sorry. So were those your EDF, is there EDF? I'm sorry.
Those are EDF projects, yes.
I'm good, yes, sir. I'm getting there. There it is, okay. So, let's see, these are recent pilots of EDFs.
Yep.
How recent? Can, can you tell me?
Yeah, so let's see, the oldest would be Holiday Creek. And so that would have been in 2021. And then the rest of them are all within 2022 or 2023.
I thought Longview Coal was 2011? Am I incorrect?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was just referring to the EDF solar projects.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the, the other projects that I listed there for West Virginia, I, I would have to look. I don't have off the top of my head when those might have been.
Chris, I can tell you a couple of them, of what the dates were. But, yeah, they, they all, of the ones that are listed there, Longview would have been, Longview Coal would have been the first. And I want to say 20, that 2011 sounds right.
Yeah.
Harrison and Brook Gas would have been in the mid, I think Harrison was 2015. Brook Gas was a little bit later. CPB Shea, I wrote the documents for that, represent that company. That was December of last year. Mountain State's gas and solar, those are kind of two different pilot arrangements. I did those, that worked too. That's in Morgantown. That's on the Longview site. It's kind of a Longview affiliate. And that, I want to say that was in 2020, but I, I would need to check that. It was, it was a couple of years before CPB Shea.
Okay, thank you. Has EDF gotten any of these off the ground without a pilot agreement? Or have they all relied on each project?
These specific ones or just in general?
Just in general.
So it's, it's, the answer would be, in most cases, no. Because, but, but you've got, it's a little bit different in different states. Some states, by statute, Minnesota, for example, has a very specific energy production tax that applies to solar and wind, which precludes the need for a pilot or any other tax abatement, for example. And there are other states very similar. In Iowa, for example, wind and solar is, is subject to a statewide abatement that's granted to any project without additional action needed locally, for example. So when I say they all have a pilot, you know, it's, it's maybe not specific, it's specifically same arrangement as here in West Virginia, but it's certainly a deviation from the more standard ad valorem property tax that would be applied to a different type of a business, for example. It's just in some states, it's written into the code that way. In other states, there's abatements and pilot opportunities written into the code. And in some states, there, there, there's even no mention of it. And, and you're often left to unders, try to figure out how this project would actually be taxed ultimately. That's becoming less and less as renewable energy becomes more common, right? You can imagine, you know, when I started in this industry even 17 years ago, it was still, you know, it was still widely unknown. And a lot of tax codes and county ordinances didn't anticipate these types of projects. And so a lot of my early career was working to help formulate those ordinances and help formulate tax codes in, in, in certain jurisdictions that were fair and reasonable for, for both the, the tax levying bodies and the, and the applicants in these cases.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I guess I don't have any further questions. I feel like everyone's kind of asked them. You know, I'm very supportive. I come from a farming family, farmers diversifying their property. But earlier today, Commissioner Jackson had mentioned, I was at a groundbreaking ceremony for another solar project. And I guess what I'm just wrestling with, and I know you kind of had answered, is that I was at the groundbreaking, they haven't asked for the pilot, and now you're asking for the pilot. So it's, it's, I, I guess you said you couldn't speak anymore, but just do you have any further clarity on the financial feasibility?
Well, I can, I can, I can assure you, and it's, it's by no means a stretch or a bluff, that with, you know, $110 million of tax liability over 39 years would sink the Wild Hill project. We have a PPA executed at market rates for, for energy. I am quite certain that some of the other projects in the area also have a PPA executed at market rates. And I highly doubt that our costing, our costs are, are that much more expensive than theirs to preclude the need to take advantage of the pilot statutes that are here. Now, I don't know how much more I can say for that other than, you know, economically, I don't understand how you could operate a project in West Virginia at the going rates, commercial power, without a pilot. Doesn't make sense to me.
Just a couple more. So the projects, recent pilot projects in West Virginia, were those counting? Supported or were they pilot projects from the state?
They, they were all the, the exact same arrangement that we're talking about here, a private developer going to a county commission and a school board and seeking a pilot arrangement and having received it.
And then just on, again, the positive impact at the bottom is the no-decking impact for West Virginia economy. You have 143 million, 170 million. And I know you mentioned when you presented, that's for economic impact for Jefferson County?
And West Virginia.
So do you know what portion of that is for what they need Jefferson County?
You know, I think it is spelled out in that economic impact study, but I don't know off the top of my head. If you don't have a copy of that, we could certainly get one to you. It is part of the public object for the project.
And then lastly, I know you mentioned the transfer station in Millville, possibly. That's in there somewhere. Or the connector in Millville.
All right.
Well, will anyone in this county benefit from the solar with, do you know? Will we see a direct impact of this?
Besides, besides the stuff that I've already talked about, you mean?
Yes, with the energy bills, it's what I'm getting at.
Ah, okay.
How much impact?
Yeah, so the, the Millville station that I referenced was, was really, that is the line segment, the two endpoints of the transmission line that we're interconnected to. So it was really meant to just help define which segment of that first energy line we're interconnected to. So we're interconnecting right on that, on that line at the site, not down the mill. So just to clarify. Now, the, or the, the question of where's the electricity go and does it benefit residents of Jefferson County? And the answer to that is most likely yes. The transmission system serves load. Once you put an electron onto the transmission system, you've now lost control of directing specifically where that electron may go or may not go, similar to a water pipe. You have a water pipe full of water, different points are putting water in, different points pulling the water out. That water is pulled and electrons are pulled to load across the transmission. Now, that said, and why I save most of the energy from this project and the others that are interconnecting here at this voltage, 138 KV is a sub-transmission voltage on the transmission system. That level of voltage is not intended to transmit energy for long distances. If you want to transmit energy for a long distance, you're looking at minimum of 345 KV, often that it's 500 or above, or it's DC lines. And so at 138 KV, that line and the systems that are interconnected to that line are intended to serve load locally or regionally. That's why I am fairly confident that most of that energy will be dispersed, particularly within first energies loaded zone, which will include portions of Jefferson.
Any further questions? Here are none? Thank you.
Thank you all for your consideration. It's time to, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. We're going to take a short VHS. Yes, thank you. We'll be right back.
Welcome back. I'm going to move out of executive session. Any discussion, or if they would say aye?
Aye.
Anybody present, much care, excuse me.
You missed yourself, Brian. You last year, you did not miss the drink before the commission. I don't know if you want to do that now, or I asked me to come back.
No, no, go ahead.
Just for purposes of, I guess, the public, I acknowledge that we are. Last year, the county commission determined to transition the emergency services agency from and the board structure that it has currently to an department. So basically changing the structure of the entity. And as you all know, I recommended that the commission hire a consultant. The commission determined not to hire the consultant, and basically assigned the transition to the ESA director, Mr. Burner, and members of his staff. When Mr. Burner took control of the project, I mostly renewed myself in the project since he was in control of that, except for drafting a couple of documents, I guess at the request of Mr. Nissel. Maybe a couple of needs and those things up. Ultimately, as you know, Mr. Burner left employment with the county, and Mr. Nissel also. So after Mr. Burner and Mr. Nissel left, the transition remained unfinished. Some of the commission's staff have worked on that, and I have tended to assist some of them in drafting some necessary documents to assist the transition. But part of the transfer is changing the current ESA ordinance to reflect the new structure of the entity. This transition has many moving parts, it's a process, but one of the parts as we move forward is to change the structure of the entity. And therefore, I, as, as part of the transition, I drafted amendments to reorganize the emergency services agency, which was placed in the packet. And highlights, I won't take very long, I won't read it all, I'm good through it all, in the packet. Basically, there is a, as you know, it's the state enacted special legislation, Senate Bill 224, that provided that the county could establish an entity called the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency that would have the ability to act as a fire board and act as an ambulance agency. And so, if you, if you review Senate Bill 224, it grants the commission that power. But then the last section says that the commission may install a board. And may create a board, I'm not reading it right now, I'm not quoting. But it doesn't say it must install a board, it says it may. And to, so I think because of the statutory ability of the county commission to operate an ambulance service directly, and then also combined, and that is in Chapter 7, Section 15, and combined with Senate Bill 224, that gives the county authority to operate the service directly, and to have an entity or a part of the county government that is known and called the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency. So that's what this ordinance does, it reorganizes the current emergency services agency. And for purposes of just making things a little clearer, I'm just going to call it the ESA. It reorganizes the ESA as a county department under the direct authority of the county commission. And the, the ordinance replaces the current ordinance that is in effect. And that's necessary because the current ordinance has provision for the, for a board to operate. And so we had to redo the ordinance as part of the transition to a department. And that's what this ordinance does, it talks about transitioning to a department, dissolves the current board, and it's the commission to appoint a director of the agency, which will operate and serve as, as the will, at the will of pleasure of the commission. And that really is about it. There's a transition period provided for it in this ordinance, this may not be the last ordinance that we have to enact if, as we complete this transition. But, you know, there are a lot of moving parts in this transition, and it's going to take a while. I mean, it's, it works through, you've got a lot of employee issues, moving and transferring employees, you have licenses, permits, various kinds of contracts. You have to integrate it into the county budget, integrate the employees into the county system. There's just a lot. So that's been progressive, but this is just one step, which is to reorganize, re-ban the ordinance to reflect the structure that the commission had previously determined to take. This is a draft, as with all drafts, you know, it's your ordinance, and so you have to determine if you want to enact this draft, if you want to alter this draft, if you want, do something different from this draft. But this is a step, and this is the draft that I'm.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody having any questions for David?
Yeah, several. So I appreciate you putting this draft together, I think it's premature to consider adopting this right now, I see several things with this. One, the ESA board hired or extended at least an offer and hired a director, one to stay in line, Mr. Craig Horn was hired as the director of the ESA. I do know there's lots of confusing language for me, who's been associated and around that board for six years now, in this ordinance. One, it talks about Jefferson County Commission shall appoint, I think that would be a hire, not an appointment, as director. This, I'm sorry, I'm on Section 1. The, it doesn't address current, I think it's premature because it only addresses the director being under the direct, direct control of the commission or the direction, the employees remain employees of the agency at the will of the director. I think there's lots of confusing and conflicting information. I do think the agency, at least through this transition, has been, as it's operating, has been very helpful, we are in the middle of a transition. I think this would come at a later time of dissolving the board once it's a county department, and we're a long way from that. There are still, it sounds like, license, you know, transitioning the employees over into a county department, I think this really confuses and muddies the water, and I don't think we're to this point yet. I think when we, instead of putting this together and possibly adopting this, I think eventually you just do an ordinance that says it's a county department, or just do an ordinance dissolving the board, when we're out of time for it to be fully functioning with our department. But I think this is premature right now, we don't even, we don't know when that transition will be complete, there's a lot of balls in the air. And I think the board is functioning with proper oversight currently, at least on the finances and the, the operation of the ESA. So we, I mean, we don't even know, us as a commission right now, what is the timeline or the game for that transition, so I don't see disrupting the apple cart with a draft ordinance now, possibly redoing one again in six months or whenever, October, whenever.
Do you want me, want me to comment on this, please?
If you feel like, I'm just, I'm sharing my thoughts. I made lots of notes, which I can.
Sure, well, I mean, those are, those are, you know, all good questions. I, I think that it's not, it's not a, an absolute issue about saying, why don't you say hire, but you could say hire, and that would be fine. It's just that if we transition, then there needs to be a director, because the director would be in charge, and, you know, the structure, as I see it, this is your thing, but as I see it, the director would appoint, would report to the county administrator, just like the other department heads in the department, and the county administrator would appoint you, or would report you.
We're not essentially doing that, that now, I mean, there's a transition team in place, it sounds like, and, you know, Mike's been here consistently reporting, we do have a director, I mean, Mike Centrum, and then Craig Horn will.
Yeah, and, you know, all those are your, your all's decisions now.
I'm just, I mean, we, it's not like we don't have a director, and the transition's still moving forward, and things are still progressing.
Well, part of the moving, the transition is, there are a variety of licenses and things that, that need to be moved under the county. And part of doing that is having a county entity that we can move it to. And so, you know, it's, it's all kind of fluid. The creation of the actual department gives us an entity to move the licenses and things to, and that's why, you know, it's a step that I think is probably important to do so that we can start doing that more rapidly. And it doesn't move the employees yet, because that's a big project. And you can move the director, but moving the employees, I mean, it just, it's a big thing that they're working through, and that will just be done as they go forward. So anyway, that's, that would just be where I would.
I, I think, I guess I'm, that's my question, what I'm addressing is, I think this is premature. And there are parts, and yeah, I can send you the notes or share these with everybody, but anyway, on, under Section 2 powers, with the way this is, this is written, and you're talking about ambulance fee and fire fee imposed by the county commission, I just have a real struggle with continuing, and once it's a county department, can do mean to charge a fee, which is essentially asking the citizens to donate to the county, because it's not a tax, even though it's a tax, it's a fee, when we're sitting, we are sitting here listening to Pylon Agreement saying we want to give companies coming in here a tax bill. So I have an issue with just the fee itself, once this becomes a county department, I believe that citizens pay taxes, and once it's a county department, it's like E911, sheriff's office or anything else, our taxes are paid for that service.
I agree, that was one thing that I had highlighted on my list as well, that I wanted to talk about. I'm just not sure if that's appropriate.
Well, I understand their concerns on this first draft, but I do think we need to be working on something so that we can, we have a date, that, you know, all these tasks have to be completed, because we have got to stop using ARPA money and start generating more funds to, to support this department. We're going to run out of our funding. And we need, we need, I think this is a good first draft, and I probably could, should study on it some more, that I want to see it move forward. I would love to do it all by Ju- July 1, but I don't know if that's possible, make it effective, and then, you know, you also have the ambulance fee ordinance too, so make hand in hand. And until we get a really good, we need a really good picture on the financials too. And I know that's hard to do.
And I think I've probably said something, we, we probably do need to work toward this, but I think it's premature right now to, without digesting and.
Well, I don't think it's premature to start working on, yeah, refine it in, in a month and hopefully.
And, and again, my concern is, we have to have some place to migrate the licenses and things to, and that's what this, to keep moving forward, that's important to have.
You have to have another legal entity to receive.
Well, they're actually going to move to the county.
Right.
There has to be a department in the county that we're moving into, in, at least that's.
Well, just a question, where are we with obtaining the county, I guess, EFIM or whatever, the tax identification?
I can speak to that. So, and I'll just give a shout out to Cindy and Mike for being really instrumental and bringing me up to date on the ESA program coming in, you know, brand new last week, and they have been very thorough with, with the process. And Mike's been really instrumental in helping me to understand it. So I was able to get up to speed, and we're continuing to work with the CPA perm, and as well as I have a couple of calls into the state and the IRS to kind of get the paperwork started and get the process outlined for that. The people that I've spoken to now anticipate that we could start working on that hopefully. So if you're looking at a timeline. So if you're looking at a timeline, as obviously, you know, we've been discussing here, I would say sometime between, you know, June and September, more so hopefully between June and July to get that E I N through. I think the paperwork's going to be relatively simple now that we have hashed out all the details. So, so that's coming really well. And then I had a chance to speak with our Thailandian rep, who is going to be helping with the transition. That's, is an agenda item this evening. And just by speaking with him a few days ago, I was able to discern that they might not be able to have the manpower to input them into the news system, but it looks like with my conversations with Jackie, that between myself and some of her staff, we could actually get that done. And Cindy and I have been working on doing an orientation packet for the transition, which means we'll be going around and getting everybody's L P N I's and W fours, all the H R paperwork. And with the process we have, that should be completed fairly quickly.
And the CPA firm's helping with the tax.
Yes, all the legal tax.
Yes.
Um, thank you. Well, I'd like to comment a little bit about this ordinance. Thank you, Nathan, for drafting that. That's obviously moved in the direction we need to move to a department. I, I read it. I don't have any immediate issues with this, with this ordinance. If, if we would happen to pass this ordinance tonight, we could always come back and amend it later, is that correct? Okay. I mean, this, this is moving in the direction that the commission has, has voted on, moving towards the department. I think it just moves us one step closer to, to the end goal and finalize the impact.
So Nathan, can you explain a little bit more? Michael, you were talking about the E I N. So do we need to have a department form to get an E I N for that department? Or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, well, the, the, they would all be trans, they would all be transferred to the county.
So they have their own right now. And so we can't let in if they still have their own. So basically, this document that we're going to fill out for the state is saying, you know, the commission has approved to take that on. So we're going to just merge it. And then that way, there's no, you know, that prevents the fraud.
But, but that's why it's important to have an ordinance that creates this department, and that gives us a place to move this up under that department umbrella, because that's what it's for. At least at the moment.
Because I don't think it would be, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it would work well legally if, you know, they were still under the direction of the board. But under the E I N of the county, that may cause some tax issues.
So I guess if this was adopted tonight, how are you rectifying the county commission of funding the director from the board just to hear?
Well, the, the, that, well, the board, the board has, has hired a director, I believe, if you said, but it still has to be approved by the county commission. So.
Well, I would, I would say this is a new, this is a brand new thing, and the board is dissolved if you, if you enact this ordinance. And, and, you know, then it's the county commission's determination as to who they want their director to be.
Oh, I, I think that is a huge risk aligned that will be in so many ways. One, we haven't adopted the ordinance, and the person was offered the position on Tuesday night, and the board's still intact, and the board does hire the director.
Yeah, but, but all, all hires have approval with the county commission.
No, no, that is not accurate with how the ESA board has operated in the past.
I don't know if that would hold water because the, the J C D A is also a board, but this commission also proves their hires as well. So I don't know.
Well, to be clear, if you adopt this ordinance, then that board no longer exists. And then it is the commission's determination about who the director would be under the terms of this ordinance. The reason that the board hires a director for the ESA is because that ordinance sets it up. That ordinance would disappear and be replaced by this one.
I know, but I guess that's my question. How are you rectifying the board, who is intact with the current ordinance, hired a director on Tuesday night? And if this is adopted tonight, which is post-hire, how are you rectifying, making that director whole? You're going to have an issue.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know the details of what happened at the ESA meeting, but I thought everyone was aware where we were moving. And so, you know, I think perhaps, you know, I don't understand why hire a director when we're in this transition.
Well, we've, we've always had a director, and that was a task of the board. The director resigned. We had an interim director who was also working as commander, operations commander. I mean, I think that was overload and doing the transitions. And it was a board's job to hire the director, and the board's still intact, so.
But I, I think the board was cognizant of where we were moving.
No, I agree, but the board, I mean, that's why I'm saying this. I think this ordinance is, is premature and irresponsible and very confusing. That's, that's my two cents.
Um, well, I, I would, I would certainly just respectfully disagree. I, I don't have any immediate issues with this ordinance. This still keeps us moving in the direction that we need to go. And if we somehow see something that needs to be a week later, we can, we can always do an amendment to this ordinance at a later date, except we find something that's, doesn't seem to be fit or whatever the case may be. I, I, I think with, with us, you know, working on this transition project, I mean, we first hired Dish over two years ago, and we're still not at the, at the, I don't know, we're not across the finish line completely yet. So we have to keep moving forward and moving in the right direction. And the board had voted to, to move as to a department, and this kind of helps us get there where we need to be.
What would happen to the very recent hire of Mr. Horn?
Mr. Horn, Mr. Horn would his, he, he, just like the Jace, just like the Development Authority. The Development Authority offered our development director a job subject to approval of this board. And then that, that, then that was brought to this board for approval. Same way as any of the elects. We saw some tonight that came in here and were needed approval for hire. It's required by law that we approve all hires, whether it's a board or elected officials.
So would that mean to say that Mr. Horn would have to come in front of us and make what, at the next meeting or something, and we would discuss this?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we would, just like any other approval or any hire in the county, it's not official until we vote on it.
But they've already voted on, while they were still.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't at their meeting, but what they should have voted on was approval subject to the commission's vote.
Actually, not, the board has the authority to hire the director. That's what the bylaws say, that's what the ordinance says. They were intact and are intact, at least as of right now, to act as the governing body under the purview of the commission. But that ordinance and bylaws gives that board the authority to hire the director for oversight of that emergency services agency.
I, I, I think I agree with Tricia. They are an intact board as of now because they haven't been, they haven't, I'm just getting tired, I'm sorry. They haven't been dissolved. So that's what I'm worried about is what will, how will Mr. Horn react if he's hired and then something changes and he has to come in front of us?
I guess that's what I'm trying to make the point. It's incredibly premature and I think irresponsible to take action on this. That's my two cents. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I'm half asleep anyways, I'm kidding.
Again, this ordinance dissolves the ordinance that we're operating under. Or at least it amends it, it reorganizes it. And it provides that the county commission will, or hire, if you want to say that, a director. And so as far as if the board of the ESA hired a director, you know, a couple of days ago, or if we go down the road to July or September, it's still the same thing that the board, that board will be dissolved. And if you adopt this ordinance, then you have to make a determination as a commission about hiring.
Okay, so that's, that's, if, if we put this off tonight and revisit this in September, and Mr. Horn's been doing this job this whole time, we have to still discuss it then as if Mr. Horn were coming in front of us again?
If you adopt this ordinance as it is drafted, it confrontates you hiring or appointing a director for the new entity that you're creating. The old entity is gone. The new entity will be the board. And because of it being a new entity, you, you're starting over. You're hiring a new director, appointing a new director. And it wouldn't really make, it wouldn't be any different if you do that tonight or if you do it two months from now as far as the old ESA's appointment of the director. I mean, otherwise, you would have to say, well, you would have to have the director that the ESA appointed forever until he retired. You would have, no, it doesn't work like that. You would have the authority to appoint a director under this ordinance. Now, this is your ordinance. I'm not the, I'm not the person charged with passing or not passing this ordinance. This is your all's ordinance. I'm just trying to explain how it works.
Okay. Could we, given this situation with the recent hire of a direct, new director, put that in this ordinance that, that the current director serve for a period of six months under the commission? Give us time, you know, to review it all, and then at the commission's discretion, we can decide whether they want to advertise, keep Mr. Horn on, whatever, for director, and it would be their responsibility in the future for the hiring of the director?
You can, you can basically say whatever you want.
I think, so you want to talk about mass exodus of employees with no job security? Do that. Let Mr. Horn be the director who was, made the, made the offer, and then the commission decide to replace him.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying after six months that he serves as director of a new agency, not agency department, that we do it as we would do most any other employee, do a review of his job performance, and if the need was felt, we could, you know, then it would be the commission's responsibility to hire the director.
Is that what we do? Do we, do we bring, for instance, with this nice lady, Eddie, that was just hired by J C D A, will she come back in six months' time for a review in front of us? Is that how that works? I don't know.
No, because there won't be a board anymore. It will be a department. And I think in these special circumstances, we can come up with something like this. But maybe legally, that's not the right way to go. I'm just trying to be fair to all parties and, you know, get the transition accomplished.
Yeah, I, I agree, we need to keep moving forward. And, and even if we, you know, e- even if we point somebody, we can still, that's going to continue running it, we can still appoint somebody and continue running the same path. And, and then this commission can hire later if that's, that's what we decide to do.
Yeah, well, I just, you know, say the commissions down the line would have the responsibility to hire the director or the department head. That's basically what it is, yeah, but.
My battery's running out. So, I don't really push you to this, this too much. Well, with, as late as it is, I, I just, I just feel the need to go ahead and move the motion and to get, to keep this ball moving. We can amend this later, but we certainly need to keep this moving so we can get to the finish line. I, I don't, we, we can amend it anytime. Amendment to an ordinance is fairly easy, I believe. So with the late, as late as it is, I'll just move the motion to accept this ordinance as drafted by our legal counsel. If anybody wants a second there, or feel the need.
I'll second it. We've had, we've had discussion, but now, so we do have a discussion.
Is, is there any further discussion? I mean, we've had plenty of discussion, but if there's any more, we'll add to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say that I welcome the Facebook posts and that, that I, I think we've all known we're moving in the direction of the department. And this is, is amendable. But with the E I Ms and the department can move under, I think this is still appropriate action.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Now, under this new ordinance, we have to appoint a, a director. Everything's been going very smoothly under our current director that we have in place. I would like to move the motion to appoint Mike Si as director of the agency.
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Um, I have a question for legal counsel.
Sure.
I don't know if I should ask it in public session.
But didn't we just talk about the recent hire and what that's going to do?
Yes, well, there's a legal question. We can certainly go in and move it to executive session. It has to do with employment.
I think that this is a mistake.
Well, I want to ask my question, so I will ask, move to go into executive session to receive legal counsel.
For employment.
Yeah.
I'll second that. All, all in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries three to two. Here, please. All right, good. All right, we're back. I need to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, you can answer it. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Uh, obviously, we just passed the ordinance to reorganize the agency. And that ordinance has, uh, where we, we are required to then appoint a director of the agency. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any more discussion?
I would like to say that the, I, I will say for the record, I think that Mike has done a very good job. I, this is not a personal thing to me. What it has to do with for me is that I have just, you know, I have learned that the ESA board has hired Craig Horn just on Tuesday night. And I, I just don't see how, I just don't see how well, how this is going to go well for us at this point. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I'm concerned about that.
Is there any more discussion? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, please signify, I was saying aye. Aye. opposed? No. Motion carries three to. All right, moving on to agenda item number 10. Check that about final. We're almost done. Three more things.
I kind of talked about item number 10 a little while ago. We were talking about the E I N and such. So it's just a request to modify the existing contract to add onboarding assistance and importing additional employee payroll information due to the ESA transition. So just kind of getting my feet wet with everybody and working with Jackie. It's not going to be a whole lot of extra funding, but we're going to work with them to probably get some training for them to just show us how to do it and see where we can go with that. Because they might not be able to get to it until September. And we obviously want to work on that prior to September. So that's the direction that we're going to move with it.
Okay. You don't need a motion, just anything for the.
I guess I just need your blessing to continue on my way.
Well, and when it impacts your budget until you need to have an adjustment.
All right, good deal.
Yeah.
Um, all right, we'll move on to agenda number 11, um, July 16th. Or county commission. It was a.
Oh, that's, I think, yeah.
Sorry, it is late. I'm sorry.
Work of a holiday, do you want to still have anything?
Um.
I think last year it had been.
I I I guess.
It doesn't have to lie for that one.
Right, yeah. Right, and having people attend. You know, I don't know.
I I, you know, I don't have any, um, I I was, last year we didn't have a meeting because just because it was in the holiday week, this is this this year.
I was going to say, I would probably want to wait till like the meeting before to see.
Yeah. I I think, I think we should address this probably in our June meeting or or right. See if we have, and if we don't have a, if we don't have a heavy agenda or some, or anything pressing, how about that? Yep. All right, um, orientation date?
Yeah, so it's really late, so I won't govern everything. I can always say the next time. But I just wanted to be really transparent with the board and with the director to kind of help them know some of the initiatives that I've been watching on in the month and nine days that I've been here. So, you know, ESA transition, I'm really looking forward to diving into that with the CPA firm and then working with the state. I have done information sessions with the department heads. I've gone around to each department head and they've kind of been helping me to learn the differences between here and Pennsylvania. And they've been sharing some challenges and successes with me in regards to the finance position and kind of some of the challenges presented with that. And while we are meeting with department heads and also some of the elected officials to kind of figure out what the scope of the finance position is, that will help us to move forward in the hiring process, to find the right candidate and to make a proposal to the board for that. So in the meantime, I have been working extensively with Jackie's team to make sure that we're getting back on track with all the finances. And so those are just the high level important stuff. So if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that needs to be done before the commission tonight? Here you're done, if there are no objections, we are adjourned.